Okay, everybody called the city of Boardman City Council meeting. July eleventh, twenty twenty-three to order will stand and do the pledge allegiance. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here we'll do the roll call. We have all councilors present. We'll go to approval of minutes. March eighth, twenty twenty-three, city, county, port meeting.
Let's move to approve this each on important meeting minutes from March eighth, twenty twenty-three.
And I'll second.
Okay, you got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Minutes of June sixth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting.
And I do approve the minutes of June sixth, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting.
Seconding.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion over the minutes? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? June twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, special meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Maynard. I pointed out that I have the long times on those instead of the five o'clock and started to four o'clock hour.
Oh, on the minutes?
Yes. I do have a corrected copy first nature tonight instead of the five forty-six, which is now three thirty. I don't need it.
Oh, for the minutes?
It was off and on.
Okay, we'll just need to make that correction.
Yeah, yeah, approval less correct.
So June twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, special meeting.
And I do approve the minutes of June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, special meeting, the correction.
And I'll second.
Any discussion over this? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And the June twenty-one, twenty twenty-three, city, county, port meeting.
Let's move to approve the minutes in the C can meeting, not June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Hey, I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We'll go to the financial report ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Thank you. So for April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, financials, and then we're looking behind. I have founding emergencies. I appreciate all your patience and notice of course, well, one for that. We're back and we're working hard at getting everything all caught up. But for your April financials, we didn't really have anything out of the ordinary. We started to receive a couple of our quarterly franchise fees and a couple of our transit logging tax fees in the month of April, but we will always have in our big expense here for a while, our Geo Bond project as those construction projects are moving along. And also our building department, you'll start to see a lot more of an expense because the expansion is picking up pace and so those applications for payment are starting to come in and so you'll start to see those be pretty heavy in the expenses.
Could I ask a question?
You may.
So I see where that some of the percent of budget received is over a hundred percent.
Mm-hmm.
And is that because we didn't know to anticipate that much or?
Well, like the first one that I'm just gonna take the very first number a hundred, which is your water fund. That's already dependent on how much water all of our clients use and so we try to use when we're working on the budget, you know, what is everybody using now, the anticipated growth, how many more new homes, how many more new residents, how many new enterprises, and then those are at different rates, so it is a little bit of a guessing game. If you recall, last year, our water fund was actually under what we had expected for revenues. So that one is based on usage, which is really hard to predict. We tried to do our best, but.
Are there any other questions about the budget?
Almost four percent.
Yeah, they're just the funding.
All right. Thank you, Morgan. All right, so we'll go down to the next part of our agenda, pre-arranged presentation of Callie Davis, Amazon Data Services.
Yeah, we have.
Yes, please.
Okay. I'm pretty loud, but hopefully this will help a little bit too. So before I started, I just wanted to thank Rick and Mayor Kiefer, the entire council for letting me come. We're here a short while ago as we were talking about some additional campuses. Just wanted to come back and take an opportunity to share some updates with the council, answer any questions that you have, but just wanted to share some projects that were recently completed as well, some updates here within Moore County and for the city of Boardman. So the first one that was completed, hopefully some of you had an opportunity to see, we just launched the docu-series, May thirty-first. The docu-series is really focused on doing a better job of telling the story of collaboration within Eastern Oregon with small businesses, with Blue Mountain Community College, who most of you know, we've had a lot of active partnerships with or workforce development programs that lead to local positions and also just other employers in the area who have been able to hire and expand to help support the data center growth in this area. So with that, I'd like to show a five-minute video. If you've seen it, hopefully you'll enjoy watching it again. I think I probably watched it about ten times. I enjoy watching it every time. So again, pretty, pretty special to be able to feature Alma and her cookie business and bakery here in Boardman. Just a little bit of background, she really got started with the Think Big space of the Sage Center, doing cookies for for that open ribbon cutting opening, and then from there has been able to expand her business to support AWS and communities events globally. And so just an incredible story, an incredible woman and family. So with that, Rick, if you don't mind, we'll kick it off with that five-minute video and then I will share some updates as well. What I wouldn't give to have just like a tiny bit of her talent, my kids' birthdays would have been much more exciting, but again, this is incredible. And I did see, I need to follow up with her, but I'm pretty sure I just saw that she had shipped some cookies up to Alaska and just really excited for her and her business. But again, just trying to do a better job of talking about collaboration and partnerships here in the region. Just wanted to share a little bit of updates with you guys. Last year, some of you might remember, I need to stay close to the mic, sorry about that. You might remember the Change X Fund was launched here in Eastern Oregon and so really, really excited to bring that back this year. And so that fund will be three hundred thousand dollars that will be open to any individuals or nonprofits, organizations in Yumitola and Moore County. Those grants range from five hundred dollars up to ten thousand dollars, and that's gonna open on July seventeenth, and so coming up here pretty quickly. Those are really based off of the Change X Awards, those based off of community impact. And so everything from open orchards to baking at the library, I know Oregon Trail Library District received some funds, Families First Childcare, a number of different entities here that are doing really great things in Moore County. And so excited to open that up and hopefully be able to fund some additional programs. Because most people are familiar with that grant fund this year, instead of announcing that fund, one of the things that I thought was really important is to have an information session, but also the opportunity to help with the application process as well. And so on the twenty-fourth of July, which is a Monday, from twelve to one, we'll be at the Blue Mountain Community College Computer Lab here in town to just answer any questions. We'll have information available in English and Spanish. I think one of the things that people always have a fear of when they hear a grant is this is gonna be a lot of work, there's gonna be a lot of follow-up questions and information I have to share, but it's really set up to be as easy as possible. It takes, you know, not very long, I would say, probably anywhere from fifteen to thirty minutes maximum to fill it out. If you kind of know what program you're interested in asking for funds for. And so again, that's just an opportunity to try to spread some, some funding throughout a lot of individuals or organizations that are doing really great work here locally. In addition to that, one of the things that's really important to us is not necessarily just picking and choosing how funding goes out, but also just this last year through the enterprise zone, ninety-five percent of the twelve point three million dollars that was dispersed throughout Moore County actually came from AWS. And so having that be local control and decision-making and where that money goes is really important to us, and we're really excited to see all of the success of the home buyer incentive program. A lot of wraparound services here that have really had a positive impact. And so of course, you guys know where that money busts goes to make the best impact here locally. We also have, as you hopefully seen throughout Boardman, a number of AWS ambassadors that are volunteering and giving back to the community. Just in twenty twenty-two alone, over twenty-three hundred hours were volunteered by AWS ambassadors here, which is pretty incredible. So everywhere from the food pantry to education, going and talking to high school students about jobs, helping with steam education. And I guess what I would say with that plug is if there is an organization that could use volunteer help, let us know. We want to make sure that that's something that we're relating to those ambassadors because they're excited to give back to the community. Whether it's something that they've approached other colleagues about things that they're interested in getting back, or if there's just a need in the community, I know. Hopefully, some of you had the opportunity to see ambassadors volunteering to get the perks ready for the Fourth of July, but if there's opportunities for volunteers that you see throughout the community, let us know. And with that, I will transition to a project that was just completed that I was so excited about. Hopefully, everybody has the top of the press report. This is an economic transformational report that was just completed. I literally picked these up. I got final approval to share them today. I got them printed this morning and I'm so excited to have them here for you tonight. This is actually the first day that they are available. And so a couple of different things that you have. You've got a community impact report that kind of shares information about what AWS and communities has been doing locally. There's also an updated fiscal impact report that's double-sided, and then the longer one that's in the binder, the economic transformational report. And so what I'm gonna share today is just some highlights from that report. I don't think Rick would appreciate it very much if I took up all of your meeting time, so I will be brief and just share a couple of highlights, but really excited to have this work completed and be able to share it with you. So with that, I will go ahead and get started. So just a little bit of a brief background, many of you already know this, but just wanted to give a little bit of background. So the cloud, of course, as we're checking whether on our phone or we're watching Netflix, all of that information has to be stored somewhere. And so really how data centers really became a business model for AWS is first storing all of that information for Amazon that was being sold through amazon.com books and a number of goods and services. And then from there, they got really efficient about providing that storage service and they realized that they could sell that, that storage at a much less expensive and more efficient cost for individuals, whether they're starting up a business. So they don't have to buy their own equipment. They don't have to have all of that onsite maintenance and upkeep. They could just sell that storage space. And so that's really how data centers started to grow and also have contracts with governments, individuals, of course, a number of different companies that use the cloud now through AWS. So from that opportunity, AWS started looking for regions around the US and started building in Eastern Oregon back in two thousand and eleven. And so from, from that early on period of time, we've now grown. We're the second largest cloud region in the US after Virginia, which is pretty incredible for our small rural community. And one of the things that some of you might have seen previously, we have our economic impact back sheets. And so this has information like over fifteen point six billion dollars that have been invested since two thousand and twelve. Over seventeen hundred jobs that have been created or retained. There's also, as you can imagine, a number of contractors and other suppliers in the region who also help support that growth. And then also nine hundred and thirty-seven direct jobs. Again, these numbers are a little bit dated. This is through twenty twenty-one, so those numbers have grown. And then over forty-one million that has been paid to Yumitola and Moore County in twenty twenty-one. So we're the largest taxpayer in both Yumitola and Moore County and then Moore County, not only AWS, the largest taxpayer, but also pays more in taxes than the next nineteen taxpayers combined. And as important as that information is, and as excited as we are about that, it's really just kind of painting a bigger picture of that overall investment, but it doesn't really do a good job of telling the story of what does this actually look like on the ground? How does this actually impact people living, working in Eastern Oregon? And so one of the things that we were really excited to do, this is actually back in December, my colleagues Daniella and Mo Fang came out and spent an entire week here. They're on our research and analysis team, so they helped put together the economic impact back sheets that we share, but they really wanted to hear from our community partners, AWS employees, our stakeholders here, what's going well, what has this looked like in the Eastern Oregon, and what can we do better? Because there's always an opportunity to do a better job and be a better neighbor. So from that, one of the things that we decided to highlight in this report is that employees that are living and working here that we did not know. A couple of them were literally just giving us the data center tour when they were in Yumitola. And just hearing their stories are absolutely incredible. I only picked one today, gentlemen, from Boardman that I wanted to share with you. But all of them had a very unique story about their experience prior to AWS and then what their career has been like since joining AWS. So wanted to take a minute just to tell Clint's story. So Clint was born and raised here in Boardman and prior to AWS, he knew that college was not gonna be the right path for him. And so he worked with the Yumitola Chemical DCO for twelve years. And if I remember correctly, there's a ribbon cutting coming up for the CDU property to get that transfer back. Is that this week? Tomorrow? That's incredible. So a little bit of time, time difference here, but as Clint would tell you and what I experienced and maybe some of you have as well, is that a lot of employees in order to keep their positions needed to move to a different state, another region in order to stay employed. And a lot of them loved living in Eastern Oregon. Their families were here and they didn't want to move. And so that was Clint's experience. And so after the DCO closed, he worked in a few different sectors and he was introduced to AWS through a restaurant here locally. And so he joined in two thousand and seventeen as a cable engineer and then transitioned to a full-time data center technician. And since then, has been promoted to data center operations manager. And then since joining AWS as a contractor five years ago, his income has quadrupled. And what I will say is these stories are across the board for employees. Again, I won't get into all of the different employees. You can read about these stories in that report. But one example is a gentleman who had worked in retail and after seven years was making thirteen dollars an hour. And his income has, has increased significantly, significantly through a manager training program. And it's just been amazing for his family to be able to buy a home and to be able to provide private therapy for his kids who have special needs. And so just story after story of really good things that AWS employees here in Eastern Oregon who love living here have been able to accomplish. Again, one of the things that's much more powerful is Clint's words rather than my own. One of the things that he shared with us is I was definitely looking at the big picture and seeking more stable employment. Now I have the option to turn my current job into a lifelong career and potentially retire at AWS someday. Thanks to AWS, I have a job that allows me to stay local and work for a company that provides the stability that I was looking for. So as exciting as these stories are, because if you're like me, there's nothing better than job diversification, where if you find something that you're really passionate about and you can do it in an area where you love living, then that is definitely the, the perfect place to be. So I know I would not be successful if I was working on servers all day, but it's nice to have a variety of jobs here in Eastern Oregon. So if people are interested in those positions, they can come back and live and work here. So in addition to that, I wanted to take a minute just to talk about not just employees that are currently working, but if you know of anybody who's interested in a career pathways, just to make sure you have that information, can share it. Can always reach out to me. I'm happy to share information as well. But real quick, wanted to share a little bit of background because sometimes I know there's still some confusion on what type of jobs are available here locally. So little bit of an example of cloud computing versus cloud infrastructure. So cloud computing, the easiest way to describe those positions are positions that can be done remotely from a computer. So a software developer, your coder, cyber security specialist. So just to give you an idea, those jobs exist. But the roles that are available here in Eastern Oregon are cloud infrastructure roles. So those are really focused on building the data centers, so construction, electricians, operating the data center, there's the data center technicians, networking specialists, and then also data center engineering operators. And those are the roles that help take care of the facilities and do facilities maintenance. Also connecting, you can imagine, it's really important. We get very frustrated when things don't show up very quickly on our computers or our phones. And so making sure that fiber, we've got fiber spicers and fiber tucks, as well as making sure that we've got energy to power those data centers. And so one of the things that we've worked really hard at is in addition to just AWS specific job, there's a lot of the contractors that help support that growth, as I mentioned. And so we've actually held three fiber optic fusion swiping two-day workshops here in the region over the last two years. And so just recently, we had twenty-eight students complete that two-day training, completely paid for by AWS, but we partnered Blue Mountain Community College. And then most importantly, after they complete that training, we bring in different employers in the region to help introduce them to those students who are interested in those careers and help bridge that gap to once after that short-term training, getting into a job. And there's a lot of demand. And so in addition to that, some different pathways to employment, this is what I get really excited about. We have a phenomenal relationship with Blue Mountain Community College. They've been great to work with. We have the data center technician program, and if Pete Hurnberg, who runs that program, was here, he would tell you that every student who's completed that program and has been actively looking for work has found a job after completing that program. It's done in less than a year. We also have the industrial systems technology program, which is more focused again on the facilities maintenance. And so one thing that we just changed this year, which I'm very excited about, is there's a hundred thousand dollars in scholarships for any student that's interested in pursuing either one of these programs. They qualify for that scholarship. And again, that's through Blue Mountain Community College, but we helped fund that. And then if you're like many people, it's not always easy to go back to school, but there's also a, a program called Grow Our Own Talent, and that's set up very similar to an apprenticeship program where it's twelve weeks on the job training. But as you're paid for that work and getting trained, you, if you successfully complete that program, you're automatically offered a job. And then again, very exciting to me is if you're just getting that information and you get your foot in the door. Another thing that we've also been working on is we want people to get those skills and get additional training to be eligible for promotion opportunities. And so we just completed the first year of a free upskilling partnership program with Blue Mountain Community College for many of these employees that are just getting their foot in the door to go to BMCC one day a week, get some additional training, and so they're eligible for those promotion opportunities. And they just completed that in June. And then finally, AWS internships, our ad partners in the region have been leading the way with internships and just being visionaries for what that model looks like. Bringing in young professionals, being able to see what their work ethic's like, getting the interns an opportunity to see if they enjoy that work. And if it's a good fit, a lot of them offer a job once they complete. And if it's a good fit, a lot of them offer a job once they complete their schooling. And so this is really modeled the same way. So data center managers, if you're a four-year um computer science student and you want to come back and work in the region, there's internship opportunities. Again, the data center technician, if you're going to the VMCC program or Freetech or another trade school, um data center engineering operations internships, and then data center security. So this is a a perfect opportunity for our young people here to go start their school, come back and get some experience. And if they successfully complete that, know that they've got a job opportunity waiting for them when they finish. And with that, I know I've taken a lot of time, so I really appreciate you guys letting me come and present today. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but would love to come back periodically and just share updates and get feedback from you on on how we can do a better, better job of being a good neighbor.
I missed out by thirty years. That's super cool. I mean, if these kids right now just put a little bit of effort, doors open and they just got to do that little bit of work to get into that door, which is waiting to be opened for them. And that's what's super cool. I I just, I can't think of enough. That's just, I mean, the opportunity is there and and we have a lot of businesses in our area right here may that try to do the same thing.
Absolutely.
So I'm just super excited.
Yeah, and stay tuned too. I didn't, I didn't mention this, but stay tuned. There are some other videos that are going to be coming out specifically on the partnership with Blue Mountain Community College and just getting to see employees who went through that program and really didn't know what they were getting into. But look back now and it's, it was a short period of time that has led to a really great career. So I'm with you. I get just as excited as you do. Any other, any other questions? Well, thank you again. I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. All right, my please, Anderson Perry, construction update. Yes, you, it's your turn.
Thanks for the introduction. My please, from Anderson Perry. That everybody, except for I tried to wish her this evening, so um everybody has uh an agenda in your stack, David. And we have breeze through the agenda. A lot of our, yes, groundbreaking and and construction progress occurred uh over the winter. And so in summary, um you know, our our phase one water project is completely to collect the water in the ground. And just a few uh highlights of that project. The uh total contract, contract price was a little over three point four million. And we are paid out ninety-five, ninety-five percent of that. Um there's a few regulatory things to tidy up with that. One of those is being the, the well log with the state. One number I'd like to shout is the percent change order. Um and I'll, I'll note this for each one of the projects that that we're going through. And uh you know, industry standard for change orders in construction is around ten percent. And the change order percentage on the the phase one project was point seven four percent. Um and and the reason there was that change order is, is because it was a regulatory requirement that the city had to meet, which was putting in this bypass asphalt structure in the river. So state Oregon only allows you to work within the windows of waters of state during certain periods. And so we had to meet that window, so we change ordered in this work to the phase one project so we could get it done within that window. And so that was the change order. So um so uh right now, the contractor owes us a performance test, a final performance testing. And just to touch on that, the design after the collector was six thousand gallons per minute, which as well meets and exceeds that. The, the other part of the per- um performance testing was the sand production, which uh the sand production results met our specified values. And then lastly, we did water quality results and uh the it was accident of color forms and then the nitrate concentration was one point two two milligram per liter.
And that's straight from the river.
That's straight from the collector well.
Which comes from the well, not the river, the water. The water that is probably a combination of it all.
Correct. It is a combination of groundwater and surface water that's infiltrated through the the aluvial of the Columbia River.
So we're not getting the, so that, that's the collector well that you're talking about, right? On the screen, that's the collector well. And that gets it, how far deep does that go?
It goes down to the bedrock, which is about fifty feet.
So it's not stuck in river water and let after, it gets river water after it goes to the soil.
Correct.
Okay.
So there is a, a connection to surface water, but it has to infiltrate through the bank to get to the, the laterals of the collector well.
So it'd be sick, is it safe to say that that river water is going down and getting into the collector well, right?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yeah. Because that's where we get our water from.
That's, that's uh, there's a definite connection between the, the surface water, the Columbia River and the collector well. But the biggest difference is that the water that gets into the collector well is, is infiltrated through the banks. Correct. And so that gives you a, a treatment uh in itself. It's a filtration technology, if you could say that. It's just filtering through the aluvial. And so you're, you're removing particulates and, and you get uh, well, for instance, the, the state characterizes your guys' water right as a surface water right. And so, but after, after water quality testing, it is considered groundwater by quality. By the time it gets through that vein filtration and into the collector well, it is the quality of groundwater by the state standards.
Gotcha.
So I've forgotten when, when we drilled down and did the well, which way does the
The laterals, they're, they're like a spoke on a wheel. And so once the, the caisson is, is sunk, um they leave construct the caisson in vertical list on the surface and then use a clamshell bucket and undermine the soil underneath it and the, the caisson sinks. And once you hit bedrock, that's when they de-water the collector well and, and guys actually go down there and use a hydraulic jack and jack the laterals out horizontally at that uh bedrock, bedrock layer. And so the laterals are at the lowest that you go, closest to bedrock. And it is, you know, they did have difficulties uh on a cer- uh on a couple of laterals because once, you know, there's no real, um, well, to put it differently, if, if you try to figure out what the, the bedrock looked like down there, all under the influence of your laterals, it'd be a lot, very expensive. So you get into there and, and you, you do your due diligence and um make your best guess as to what the aluvial is going to look like down there. Um but you do run into stuff that you don't know is there and still don't know what's there. Because you're fifty feet below the ground. But the, the lateral lengths met uh the contract um lengths. And so in turn, you have a, a high-capacity well and good quality water.
That wasn't necessarily my question, I'm sorry. I thought that collector one, the laterals went out towards the river. Collector two, they went inland. So where did three go? In a circle?
They're all in a circle.
They're all in a circle?
Yeah.
Okay, that's one.
And there's one spare port that for a future lateral if, if it's ever needed, which both on collector two and collector three face south inland.
Okay, that's, that's my question. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so moving on, uh the phase two project is underway. We are uh, the contract price is ten point two million and we're five percent complete. So we're just getting going. We just uh protest the first payment application. So the, the booster pump station site is, is cleared and grubs. Um there's really not much to look at right now. Uh this is the, the reservoir foundation. And they're, they're, they're excavating um paths for the inlet and outlet IP to, to bear on. So they let now let IP, you're, you're talking like thirty and thirty-six inch pipes that will, will feed the reservoir and also feed the booster pump station. So they're, they're big heavy pipes. Um so yeah, that's, that's currently what's going on with the, the phase two project. Um
And that's right next to the old shop. So if you go down Marine Drive, you'll see all that work.
Yeah, this is, in this picture, you can see that, that the existing reservoir. Uh they won't start, they're going to work on the reservoir first and then get the foundation board for their subcontractor to start going vertical with the reservoir. And then the, the general contractor is going to start on the booster pump station building and the foundation for that. And around November, they'll start on the, the collector well pump station. So if everything goes according to schedule, we'll be, we'll be done in July next year. All right, any, any questions on that? Uh the next project is our wastewater project, uh contract price of a little over three point four million. Uh the contract is ninety-five percent complete. And again, we're, we're doing some um you know, cross marks, T's and dot our I's with the regulatory agencies, EQ and OWRD. And uh so yeah, the, the contractor still owes us some operation and maintenance manuals and the as-built drawings for that project and, and we will use those in our, our, our final submittals to regulatory agencies. And uh yeah, the, the overall change order percentage for that project was two point four percent. And there was, you know, when you get into construction and, and revamping existing facilities, I mean, we speak about the, the list stations you run into unforeseen conditions. There was a, a lot of hydrogen sulfide gas, uh deterioration of list station two. And so that, that was one of the change orders. Um we had to relocate our line at where the new lagoon went, uh which wasn't located. But uh yeah, it was a very successful project and uh looking forward to filming the lagoon.
So those are some nice numbers, right, Mike? Instead of ten percent
Absolutely.
To get down really low.
Uh any questions on wastewater project? Okay. Next is city hall expansion. I, I didn't provide any pictures of the city hall expansion because you can see the progress as you walk into the building. Uh but it's going well. It's on schedule. And uh we're thirty-nine percent complete with the project. And framing's done, obviously. You can see that. Uh soon as they get the roof dried in, they'll bring in the trades. And, and they'll start putting in the plumbing and electrical and, and just record with, with progress. So scheduled completion date on that is March of twenty twenty-fourth.
You know, they locked all of our windows, so we cannot watch them work. So all we see yeah, they didn't like the micro managing. Uh so all we can see was when we drive up into the parking lot, that there are men working or not working.
Yeah.
Yeah. But they're coming along. And I have to say, the match to the outside of the building has been really nice. They did a great job there.
Yeah, you might notice a, a slight color differential in the, the CMU and that's just a matter of sun exposure.
Old new?
Yep. So in twenty years, that side will look like this side. Okay, uh moving on, upcoming construction projects, we've got Southeast Front Street and Southeast First Street right around the corner. Um looking to bid that, and advertise for bid that at the end of July. And so we'll move into construction this year and with a completion date of around November. So lots of new road, roads to drive on.
So Southeast Front is okay, that's what I was like. Local businesses will be, and is that going to go all the way across to like where roadway now? It'll just be that and then connecting to
It's southeast.
Got you.
Southeast and then Southeast First will be a new road.
Okay.
Uh which connects front to Oregon Trail Gardens.
That'll be good.
On the eastern side and a trailer park.
Yep.
Here, the one we've been talking about when uh Leslie was here. That's if not before then.
Uh there will be, you know, well, I guess there will be impactful local businesses, but the con- like within a con- construction contract, the contractor is required to maintain access to all local businesses at all times.
So I guess my other question would be, the, the, the area that is in front of the actual street, is that going to be developed as well?
The area
So, so where a lot of the truck drivers park.
That will be of, of hard surface, so the asphalt and will strike parking lines or or it'll be designated for truck traffic.
Nice.
Uh and then we're putting curb gutter and sidewalk around a little park park there and additional vehicle parking. So you know, managing storm drainage for all that additional debris surface. Um yeah, it's going to look really nice. We'll put landscape strips in um the current curb gutter that's there now is the edge of right away. Um so the actual sidewalk will be further out into the road. Um and, and so you'll have a sidewalk there.
Thanks.
Do you have drafts, the little plans?
I do. Not with me right now, but
Like for the main street improvements that you could share?
Are you jumping before?
Yeah. We're running out of time. I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering if we, because I see that they're up for bids, I'm assuming there, the plans are
Well
Kind of laid out.
The, okay, so the septic receiving station, that one will block a bit pretty, pretty quickly. Uh northwest Columbia Avenue improvements, which consider the replacement of the sewer and the water in northwest Columbia over there. Um and then that would be a full road overlay. So it'll be a new paving surface on that whole road. And then north main street improvements is anticipated to begin until spring. And so there's the, one of the things that is somewhat delaying that project is the, the completion of the, the Gilson traffic study. And so within that study, we'll get uh buy-in from ODOT because this is, that, that project is included in the main street interchange area management plan implemented area. And so we, we need to get their approval. We'd best to get their approval to, to uh do this project just because it's going to impact that interchange.
Now on the northwest Columbia Avenue Now on the northwest Columbia Avenue, is that the one that was discussed, I think? Couple of meetings ago and talked about this, what was the sewer lines and where is that the actual road?
So i- i- tha- that includes fixing sewer water lines on that, and then a resurfacing of the road once those are done.
Okay, and we were just talking about Columbia Avenue, not the little side roads, not Donovan or what's.
It's just from the the well, it's not even to the corner, um.
It's just shy of the corner to.
Where it starts to turn around.
In two thousand and four, the city did. That, uh. I guess the furthest west part of, um. Oregon app. Replace the water line and and it's some service. And so we're tying into that where the where those improvements ended and taking it all the way out to main, well, close to main street.
And then when we do northwest Columbia, we are, is the city giving out notices to the people that. Will probably be impacted because, I mean, you know as well as I do that the. Both those sides, people park up and down that street.
Yeah, there'd be communication. There has to be.
Yeah, just because it is, it is a pretty busy neighborhood and a lot of cars.
That communication fees will be in part on the contractor, that is a requirement of their contract. When we do projects like this, because there's impacts not only to access to to homes, but. The at the end of the day, everybody has to get to and from their houses and emergency services. Emergency services have to get to and from, um, you know, they have to have access, so that's. Kind of the same stipulations as, you know. Oh, that's a, that has to always be, uh, granted.
Gotcha, thank you.
So on the, uh, uh, North Main Street improvements, we we did a presentation with the plans of the 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 initial plans, those are not. One hundred percent done, we're we're basically waiting for the Kiddlesam, I think we're getting closer. The the conversations we had with them last week, I think we're getting closer to have that completed, uh, there's a lot of work to be done on this yet, so. Um, it it. I know that I perhaps might start engineering, um, but again, you've got to get, you've got to have a plan from them in order to get engineering started, so.
Yeah, before I can finalize the scope of what I'm gonna design, I I need to be able to, uh. Have that approval from ODOT of that schematic design. Before really scoping out a project and and. Getting to work on it. Last thing I want to do is a bunch of rework. That's everything. Any other questions?
So again, we wanted Mike just to give you a rundown of the current construction, past construction projects, where we are and and some of those timelines. Um, we've got a lot, and it's been very busy, uh, we keep them very busy, so.
Great, thank you.
Can I add one more thing to that, just to.
Can you?
Uh, kudos to Mike, oh, the percentage on the change order that being so low is, um, a lot to do with their work being. Right on, spot on for the contractor that they're having to not have corrections as the change orders. So that reflects, um, the volume where you would get from.
Well, thanks.
I think I think a lot of it has to. We can tell if he wants to spend more money, I said.
And then we could mention John.
So there is, I I don't know if any of you guys know, but there is a full-time project representative that lives here in Oregon and Fortview. Uh, same genre rule, and he is the boots on the ground and and make sure. He's holding the contractor's feet to the fire and making sure the project is built according to the plans and specifications. And he's my earpiece and my eyes on the ground. Uh. He's a zayer, I mean.
Trust me, he's been extremely valuable and we we've had them. For our early project, we had some issues that, uh, because of him, they were detected and and we were able to stop it from becoming an issue, so. Uh, it is good, and and they've been great to us, but I can tell you that. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Again.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it, absolutely.
Alright, we're at the public comment se- se- uh, segment. Invitation for public comment. Anybody who would like public comment? No, thank you.
I, yes, I would like to make a public public comment, Mr. Keeper, Mayor Keeper.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, well, I see that there's a resolution on the. Now, let me look at the agenda again, uh, I I I went in and I just stopped in to try to get a copy of the packet about the resolution. For the public records request, and I wasn't able to go online and see the packet. I I always assume that because I've been told that we have to go in and get the packet. How do I know that I have issues of something that you vote on for transparency, transparency and accountability? If I never see the packet until after you voted on it? And that 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 really does concern me as far as that transparency, uh, accountability of seeing the packet and seeing what you're voting on. Does that make sense?
They need to identify themselves.
This is Jonathan Tholman.
He didn't say that.
I I I'm sorry, Karen, did you, I I, I'm sorry if you didn't recognize, this is Jonathan Tholman. And I was just in at the meeting trying to get a packet, and I'm asking a question about the resolution that you're gonna vote on, but not seeing what the. The definition of what the resolution that you're voting on.
Alright, appreciate the comment, Jonathan, do you have anything else you would like to share?
Well, does that make sense that I haven't seen the packet?
Well, neither have the people that are in the audience either. So you're not alone.
Yeah, how many people are in the? How many people are in the audience?
You were here when there's two people, so what I'm saying is, uh, we're gonna get a resolution report. And then we're gonna talk about it, and then we would have. Uh. Then we discuss it, that's probably what's gonna happen.
But but if I don't see the resolution, I can't comment on it to say if I pros or cons. From the public comment section, it's already been done.
Mr. Man.
Just saying. I understand, Jonathan.
Okay, thank you for listening.
Just wanted to give a reminder that the public comment is just a time for us to listen.
Well, absolutely, but abso- but. There is a little bit of. Leeway to where we can have a little bit of discussion too as well.
So does anybody know if he is on a requested to get the packet every? He has none. He is not, he has not.
So would that be?
We we'll communicate that.
You'll communicate.
A- anybody that wants a copy of our agenda and packet. Um, if they want electronically, they could be put on mailing list, uh, uh, to receive those packets prior to any point now.
But they have to request.
Yes.
Okay.
Otherwise.
Did you hear that, Jonathan?
I I I've requested that like five years ago when I was told that I have to be at the meetings.
Okay, well, the comment that was just shared today, tonight, absolute right now, that if you would like that. To get.
Okay, I like. I will put myself on the list. I would put me on myself on the list, and I'm I'm sorry for that, I just know, and let me use as another example. Uh, is when it came to the loop road, everybody wants to get notices, well, when we had the issue out here with our loop road. There was no detours, there was no announcement, there wa- there there's just not a a a fairness or a transparency on both sides. Of one side gets, you know, a notices and another side doesn't get notices, especially when it comes to detours and blocks of roads. So I mean, it's it's been fairly documented what I'm saying as as far as that 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 fairness across the board. And transparency across the board when issues do get brought up.
Alright, thank you, Jonathan, just remember, uh, to put that request in to be on the mailing list. And you will get your packet. Is there anybody else online that would like to have public comment? Having hearing done, we'll go to, uh, resolutions. Fourteen dash twenty twenty-three, public records requests.
Mr. Man?
Yes.
I'm trying to hear, uh. So. Uh, few months ago, we were, uh, having discussions with our legal, uh, council, and they advised us that, uh. Our the current, uh, the the current request that we were using needed to have some, uh, language modifications done to, uh, be. Um, complying with Oregon State, uh, statute, so we made those changes, this is a sample ordinance. Our, uh, public records request, uh, that we are to leave the legal board in cities.
It's one of their templates.
This is their template and, uh. This meets the the, um. Requirements that our legal counsel, uh, advises we need to change. That's why you have a new, uh, resolution before you, and any kind of change, well, we, uh. If you approve one, you need to repeal the.
Well, we have a highly impacted citizen who shared some concerns, is there any way that we can? Give a copy to that individual? After.
Mr. Man?
Yes.
Uh, prior to this meeting today, I did read through this, um, entire resolution, um, because I. Anticipated that there might be some questions in regard to it, and I also looked up the Oregon Public Records Law to make sure that. As you said, your attorney had done, to make sure that we were following the guidelines as established by Oregon State law, and I did not find any discrepancies.
Thank you, I was just wondering if. How hard would it be to send a? Email to him, hey, this is the change.
So, um.
What do you think?
He was in earlier, I had already told him I would send you a packet tomorrow.
Well, thank you.
Welcome. And this is included in that.
Okay. Does anybody have any, but I would be discussion.
You need to read.
Give me the motion and the second.
Well, Mr. Man, I'm going to adopt a decision number fourteen dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution of the city of, excuse me. Of the Oregon City Council adopting a citywide public records request policy, repealing resolution number eight dash two zero zero six.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Anybody would like to have over this?
Well, just to be clear, this is just an update to current standards according to.
It's so that we can meet one state that you.
Got you, alright, okay.
Any other questions or concern? For discussion? Having hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passed. Resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty-three, city fee schedule.
Yes, so, uh, yearly, we try to, uh, send out, uh, update our fees. And we have a fee schedule, as you can see, that is attached for all the services that are provided within the city of Portland. Um. We tried to upload, update those yearly, and instead of having them tied directly to an ordinance or a resolution. We have a schedule so that we don't have to repeal all of those other ordinances, that's all in one's pre-schedule. Um, so here are the attached fees the staff have presented and, uh. I would ask that we use and take that under advisement and we, uh. Approve that fee schedule. Mr. Man, I'm going to adopt resolution number fifteen dash three zero two four, resolution adopting a fee schedule to govern the fees for city services. With two resolution number thirteen dash two zero two two.
I second.
You meant twenty twenty-three.
It says twenty twenty.
Yeah, you just have to say twenty twenty-four. Yes, yes, fifteen dash twenty twenty-nine.
Oh, yeah. I do second, that's still.
Is there a discussion?
I just have a question, um, all of the fees that are listed, are they just updated or are there any new ones?
So there are going to be new ones in in that, uh, you've been working on, um. Listener's license, uh, business license ordinance, which hopefully will add to you. I'm hoping within the next council meeting or so, uh, to prove, um, and so, early on, when we first had these discussions. We talked that, uh, that if we do the business license and transient license, this wasn't about generating revenue. Uh, so much as to, uh, charge for just maintaining, so we set those fees at twenty-five dollars. That was a kind of the direction that I got from the council, that we didn't wanna make them astronomical.
So one time fee?
Every year. Or on the mobile vendor license, every time they come in, they have to get a. A page of a new license. So if they're coming in selling magazines or vacuums, they gotta come in, get a permit and.
So. If I am the. The vegetable guy or the watermelon guy, whatever, for the harvest during harvest time. I need to come in every, so if I'm only there, it's just a yearly thing?
Yes, I don't believe we've set on those, we've set a timeframe, uh, I would have to look at that ordinance, Carla. I see you're on, uh, on the, on those transient mobile vendors, did we set a timeframe for them?
Yeah, the the draft ordinance has some language in there that would be, um. Like every three months, um, that, so and there's four, there's also the special event one, so. Special events would be just the one time for the special event, um, the. The mobile vendors would be. You know, if they're coming in for three days, it would be for those three days, if they're coming in consecutively and they can give us what those dates are, then it would probably cover the season. Whatever that season might be, um, business licenses would be annual.
That's gonna be for everybody? For every business, uh, so I gotta pick for a business license and a chamber license and.
So there's a business license fee and there's a mobile vendor, food vendor license fee, how does that affect, um, all like the chocolate trucks and the people on the mobile food? Park, should they have to pay both?
No, they would, they would fall under the mobile, uh, food vendor license, because that is a mobile business, they can't even.
I have a question. Under community development, it says temporary signs is fifty dollar fee, does that include campaign fines?
Uh.
It does not, it does not. It does not include camping signs.
Does that, okay, and then I see under animal control that there is a cat transport fee and impound fee. Does that mean that we're actively impounding and transferring cats?
We typically don't impound cats, but if people catch them and bring them to us, we take the vet. Or if we have a problem area and they've defined and we have to impound, uh, impound a cattle. But we we don't really try to do that.
Alright, so the eleven cats that decided to make my deck their own spencer?
Those are yours.
They are not. They're not fed. They're in the city living.
They go away if you don't.
I have never had them.
If you had an issue, you need them again. Uh, we.
Twenty dollars.
We can give you the trap and we can, we can, uh, the the city will transport it to, uh, the vet.
Products?
Yeah.
Full food plants, I've already contacted John.
But they'll probably, you'll probably pay that fee.
So I only, my only concern about some of these fees. For individuals who are trying to try to make a buck. Is. The purpose of. Maybe some of the. Whatever you call it, a license. Are. Are we trying to find out who they are, what they are? Or do we wanna make it a fee to where it makes a hassle for them to come into our community to try to? To make some money. And, uh, my only concern is, is. if I I'm talking about the lady, the two people that set the little, I don't know, the the fruit stands that sell and stuff. Okay, are we, are we more concerned in them getting a a permit? To say you're in the city of Boardman, or is it more important that we know you have food handlers, who are you, where you're from, those type of things without a big enormous twenty-five dollar fee every time you come in, or you're only gonna be here for three months? That's my thing is.
So I think it's dual purpose, multi-purpose day, and to your question, uh I and and trust me, um those fees, uh when when, what Carla, why don't you, why don't you tell them what other jurisdictions around us are charging for those fees? I'll give you a better idea.
So I don't. Sure, I don't have my paperwork here in front of me. It's in the office, but um on the mobile vendor, um Hermiston's fees are three hundred dollars or five hundred dollars. And I'm I'm trying to remember the distinction between the two. I think the three hundred was if they were in the city developed food pod. Um, five hundred if they were elsewhere. Um, Pendleton was Pendleton had a food vendor license on top of their business license. In Pendleton, the business license is a hundred and five. If you're doing business in, if you are a business in Pendleton, they actually also charge a hundred and sixty-five dollars for people who don't have a business in Pendleton but are doing business in Pendleton. So if you're a contractor and you're doing business in Pendleton, you still have to get a business license. Um the Hermiston actually doesn't charge for their business license, but they have other fees that they that they do capture. Um, and and a lot of jurisdictions, you're getting the business license and you're getting the mobile vendor fee. So um, you know, with the 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 ordinances for us are still in development, so we'll need to work out all of those those kinks as we work through the final language of the the ordinances that we'll bring forward for adoption. Um, the fees are kind of the placeholder at this point in time for when those get adopted. Um uh, yeah, uh, most places, uh, the other one, uh, Umatilla's um business license fee was forty dollars. Um, I don't remember what their mobile vendor fee was off the top of my head.
So the idea is not to make it a gen- a revenue generator. We've got, we've got to chart something because it takes staff time to process and 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 do that. This didn't seem, I was trying to go with the direction that you didn't want this to be a financial burden.
No, I I don't. I just don't wanna make it seem like regardless of the fee, I don't wanna make it a burden on the people. It might need a little bit of work, but I don't want it to to be construed as.
So if I might, um our fee schedules will be changed. So uh this is, this is what we what we need to move forward charging. If you guys decide when we come with before you with the 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 actual ordinance and you wanna charge more or less, we can have those conversations. This is a placeholder to get those fees so that if you agree to them, we can start charging them and start that process.
No, I appreciate the work and effort that you're doing on that. And it's important that people online understand that the city is working on some of those things. And uh and it also let the individuals who happen to listen to it know that the city does care about that. And uh
So is there any is there any change to this fee schedule except the addition that you have put business licenses on? I didn't adjust the fee schedule. Then we we only added
Planning fees have been adjusted as well.
This this year, uh in this, in this document, the planning fees have been adjusted and um we can't, I'm just gonna say when we have a resolution like this, there needs to be better information ahead of time. I can't, I can't as a city counselor have you come and say, here's a resolu- um a resolution and you don't tell me what's changed on it. You asked me to vote on something and you didn't even mention the changes. And and I'm here a lot of days. So I think if the rest of the council here yeah, that's.
If if you would like staff time, I could have probably Carla talk about those fees and what those increases are. Um if you, if you, if you need more information to make an informed decision, obviously.
Well, I just think that you I can't assume, or maybe I'm the only one that assumed that the only thing that was changed on here was that, well, they didn't tell us that they added the business licenses. Nobody mentioned that to start with. And I assume because nobody has said anything, that the fees were the same. We just wanted to add this part so that when we brought the ordinance or next that we would know that.
Well, we can, we can hold off on.
That's on me. Um, I would, I would assume that you would think that as things continue to progress, be they're gonna increase. Um, I mean, we can't keep our fees the same. So maybe, and so I I think I get what you're asking is that we should have there should be the highlighted ones, like what are we increasing? What was it before? What is it gonna be now? Highlight those ones and then whatever additional ones were added, like what you're saying, the visits, highlight that just so that we know what we're looking at so we can make an informed decision. I don't disagree with that.
Sometimes, sometimes in the past, when Barry would do it, he would have a red line through it and it'd say
This is what the change is.
The new change.
Okay.
And and so then then it became very clear when you were looking at the document what was being asked of you.
Uh huh.
I I'm not sure if we've changed administrative numbers. I don't know. You say planning, but the planning I see is in the cost of plan review. That's the only planning where I see. So I don't, I don't know for sure where you're even talking about or which gate. Positive.
So this is on me. I didn't ask any questions. I was hoping that our fees need to be increased. And this is, this is our proposed fee schedule to present. So I will uh uh give a staff. We will have uh an explanation at your next council meeting. We we can table this. And we'll use the existing fees that we're charging as of today. Um, and in the future, totally resolve this.
Well, I don't want you to feel like uh you're being attacked.
I I I don't feel that way.
I just want, I mean, I think it's been pretty made, I think everybody's kind of wants to have more information.
I I I I one hundred percent agree with you. I would say though that that uh um if there are changes to the uh fee scheduling, um, we need to staff is making an affecting uh, you could choose not to, but at some point, uh you're gonna have to change some of your.
Well, I understand. So I I, so basically, I I can understand why I was kind of along the way I was when I was making comments is because I don't know what we started and I don't know what we're ending with. You know what I mean?
Right. The only thing that I interest with you asked was the business license.
Yes.
And that's the only thing I can speak to because I had directed all that.
And uh, and I I think that if it would only be fair to make a a decision.
If if I may, some of the other changes are the fees that we already voted on to raise for the garbage rates that start on the first.
Which would have to be.
Yeah. Um, we've already voted on those changes.
Also, I know, I know.
Yeah, those are changes in here. Um, we just passed a resolution from public records. Those are some of the changes in here. Um, the building code every year gets an update in the first square of the foot. And um automatically by ordinance, those increase every year. Those changes are in here.
But I would say, Jackie, that that we just need to be better prepared to explain why we need to justify those.
Yeah, yeah.
Carla, you have the floor.
Thank you. So um specifically on the planning fees, there um there's really no changes. Um, what's driving why they look different um is because honestly, when I developed the fee schedule that you adopted, the last time we did planning fees and changes, I I I I I'm blunt. I was in the middle of the conflagration of trying to resolve an awful lot of issues and I was like, I think this is what they are. I think these are the things we do. Um, we've been working for the last several months to implement the Citizen Serve program for the online application process and planning is the the portion that we're working on now. They've asked us to um align fees with the application processes that we're building to go into Citizen Serve. And so what you're really seeing in planning is more of a reorganization of those fees that fits how the Citizen Serve program is set up. The actual fee for what the person is asking for, like if they're asking for a variance, the fee we had before is the same fee they're gonna have going forward. The fee that we had for a land partition is gonna be the same fee going forward. We had a couple of things that were um, again, dare I say inconsistent, because when I did it the last time, it was like, I don't know exactly what Wardman calls it, but I think it's this. And in the last nine months, I've been able to resolve some of those things and get a better handle on that. Um, but there's really no change um that would be substantial other than how it's organized and um formatted as far as what's in front of you. Uh, hopefully that helps you understand on the planning side that we're, we're not actually changing anything. We're just trying to organize it so it fits with um kind of the programmatic structure that that we're moving into and through. I'm happy to answer any further questions.
So so Mr. Mayor, rather than than beat this with in an inch of his life, let's table it. We will be better prepared to answer and present at our next council meeting.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty-three, city fee schedule will be stable for our August meeting. Resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty-three, declare surplus property.
So Mr. Mayor, uh, Chief Leader advised me that our twenty fourteen dollar charter has uh seen better days. It's time for us to rotate that vehicle out. Um, we we did order a couple of new vehicles. Um, that process has taken anyway, uh, so we we have the option of we could strip all the equipment out of the vehicle uh to put it on the new car, which some, most of the equipment won't transfer, but like the, for example, a light bar. We needed a light bar for the new car. Um, uh, the city of Nissa, uh, which we've donated charges to in the past, are needing another charter. Um, my conversation was with them, hey, we need a light bar. Um, can you pay us the cost of light bar or buy the light bar for a new car, excuse me? Um, and for exchange of the vehicle, and they're willing to do that. This vehicle is surplus. We would ask you surplus the vehicle and then if you're okay with it, we'll continue to work with Nissa to try to address that issue.
Yeah, open up to a motion.
I'm gonna build up resolution number sixteen, two thousand twenty-three, a resolution that documents on a city of Boardman public property as access.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion is second. Is there any discussion or question? Having hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, going to our next piece of agenda is hiring a city manager.
Mr. Mayor. Bill, uh, uh, we were able to uh negotiate uh the contract that you approved uh as a council with Mr. Brandon. Uh, both parties have signs. So now I would ask that you uh and the council uh make a motion to appoint him as the city manager.
I move to appoint Brandon Hammond as city manager for the move to approve the negotiated contract approved by council with Mr. Hammond for that position.
A second.
I have a motion is second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Well, Mr. Hammond.
August third is his first day. That is, that evening, uh, we will have a council meeting.
The mayor will be gone that day. I will be in Delaware and firing senior softball world series, so.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hammond is online. I don't know if you want him to say anything or if you have anything. No, nothing.
Of course, Mr. Hammond will call you online. Hey, would you, do you have any comments you would like to share about this today?
Um, I do not. Um.
That's pretty lame.
Nice. Uh, I'm gonna be meeting uh with the employees of the city and then my hope is to meet with all the councilmen. Um, I have already talked with the city manager in Hermiston. We're gonna set up uh to start doing a regional like quarterly manager, uh, city manager meeting. Uh, so that's in the work. And then I was, I was hoping to, just being very new to the position, um and do some training and then maybe we could all do that together to get a refresher, get everyone's roles, responsibilities. Um and if that, everyone's in agreeance, I can set that up. Um moving forward. I think they do that all online.
Well, you're already registered for several events, so.
Yeah.
Yes, we did. We did already set up a call council. When you come, uh, we will already have a that lot of emails and registered, confirmation for registration upgraded.
Very cool.
Well, Mr. Hammond, I will say congratulations and uh welcome back to Boardman.
Hey, thank you. Thank you. I am excited.
Moving on, please report.
I should have the wish board in front of you. Uh, you'll notice that the first month that there hasn't been an increase in everything, or everything went down a little bit except for all of the reps turned up. I don't really have an explanation for that. Uh that's all I have for that. Any questions on the stats? Uh, the only other thing is, uh, as you know, we had a recruits actual lateral position open uh since January. I've been monthly reviews of it. Uh, so we, I did I did a review uh in June. Uh, we currently have, we had five applicants. Um, so uh we did a testing cycle on Friday. We have the four people um that that are going to come to that, so I will hopefully.
With a potential SRO?
No, this is not the SRO position. Uh, we have the recruit uh slash lateral position that we had to I guess backfill for the SRO in hopes that somebody come up and would take the SRO position. Uh, we do have the SRO position that has been uh posted uh for lateral only.
Oh.
To look outside, that one was posted by the beginning, the middle of June. As of yet, I have no applications for that. Um so anyway, hopefully after uh the testing cycle on Friday, we'll have found suitable applicant that we feel can fit in with our department and the city. That was all I had.
Do you have any questions? Any questions? Thank you, dear. Building department.
So asking your packet, it was the veteran box, it was the month of June.
Uh, I I took part in this recommendation and split out the rural counties into Boardman and then all else rural county. And you see those figures represented there. I think that's kind of what you were looking for. Okay.
Can I ask you, is it the same twenty-one that's in the Boardman pit? So.
No, it's not. When you see Boardman, it just ironically enough, we sold in the city limits twenty-one and then in the county in the ninety-seven, eighty, ninety-eight and code twenty-one. And that is the way it worked out. And you can see all else rural county was twelve.
Yes, okay, thank you. I appreciate you doing that.
No problem, no problem. Well, for us, uh, we're really excited to, as Carla said, we're working with Citizens or writing the software and um we're finding most contractors are really liking it. We have a couple of older guys that really still want those paper plans with the red stamp on them. They're just having a meltdown because they don't have paper plans. But um they're they're getting it. They're getting it. Um, I think most part, everybody's really happy with it and it's gonna work out really well. It'll be nice to get planning moved over to a It'll be nice to get planning moved over to it as well, cause I'm having to collect fees. You know, like mail me a check or send me something outside the system. Oh, but you've also got a building and then you go online and pay those fees. So it'll be nice being all online. Or, yeah.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you very much.
Federal Department. So uh, I don't see the official report, but uh. I was gonna tell you in my manager report that um, we promoted Ralph to the Pilot Corps Department. Uh, so he's in. He's in there ground running. He's got a lot of projects on top of what he was already doing, so uh, he's very busy. Um, right now, uh, Kevin and you are working together. Kevin is in Seventh Heaven because he's actually out. Working without, he's out sweeping the roads and he's, he's like, why, why can't I done this years ago? So he's very excited to be doing that, but he's helping along. So um, uh, that's been a great transition. Uh, I think uh, he'll do a good job in the future.
Any questions? City manager report.
Well, I tried to give that to Brandon, but he wasn't very well prepared, so. I would tell you that I didn't formally write up something. Uh, I feel city hall is busy all the time. And everything, if you don't think staff here doesn't have anything to do, you're sadly mistaken. Um, we have a very busy crew and it's all the time. Um, I would tell you that uh. Coming up is the League of Oregon Cities Annual Conference, October twelfth through the fourteenth. Um, it's going, it appears to be in Eugene. Um, if you're interested, let us know. We'll get you registered. Registration opens on the thirteenth, uh, uh, starting at eight. Um, if you're wanting to get a motel room, uh, through the, the league's price, you probably wanna register fairly soon. Because those will fill up rather quickly. So the sooner we, you know, the, the sooner we register.
Man, the League of Oregon City Sunday, uh, for sure, that's what I guess.
I didn't have to get one. I got an email.
Right, they, they default to email. That isn't being all.
October twelfth through the fourteenth in Eugene.
But we realized that thirteenth is Thursday. And Jackie can attest to the fact that if we're not on the phone at eight a.m. on that day. You probably are not staying at the convention center. That you will stay at some other motel. So. You can't dilly-dally till September to decide you're gonna go in October. Well, you can.
You just will probably be staying in some other.
Springfield.
Yeah.
In Springfield, exactly.
Anyway.
What's up, Pat? No pressure. And the thirteenth of July or the thirteenth of August. They have tomorrow.
Yeah, so they, they, they just happen to notice. So if you're interested, if you really wanna stay, then you need to let us staff them so we can register. Well, what I would also ask is if you commit to going. And we pay, we don't get refunded, so.
You better go.
Please, if you plan on going, go. If you don't plan on, don't put your name in. It's just because we don't, it's, it's a waste of taxpayer funds, so.
Well, and Mr. Hammond, we're, we're registering him at eight a.m. on the thirteenth. So.
You're not here to say no, Mr. Hammond, so um, we got you registered, so. Um. I'm sure there's plenty others, but uh, um, we're getting close on time, so unless I have any questions, I won't probably.
Just a quick question on the leagues. Is it just a, like an overall refresher? Um, same as the one that Heather and I went to at the beginning of the year, just kind of a.
This is their annual conference, so they go through a whole gamut of stuff. They're just gonna register for different stuff. I, I'm surprised you didn't send out some kind of brochures to tell you what they.
They don't anymore, but if you go, if you find the email, they'll have a link to the conference. Um, or just go to League of Oregon City's website and go to their events, go to their annual conference, and you'll be able to see the, the agenda. And they will give you a little blurb about what.
I can shoot you about tomorrow and everybody.
Because I just also made a note to, I'll speed up your sleeves and I am interested in going. That helps having a footballer on time for that.
So um. We are having a small cities, we're hosting small cities, uh, 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 meeting here on the nineteenth. Uh, we're gonna be in the seniors, we, we got them to put for us, it's from end of. Noon on that, on that, uh. We'll probably have fifteen, they say thirty, but usually it's twelve or fifteen uh, people that show up in the street, so. Right.
And I think that they will probably be doing a legislative update this time. So if anyone's interested, let us know and come, you know, have lunch over there with us.
They sent an application for that to our email. And I apparently have more than I count League of Oregon City, so I couldn't figure out how to walk into anymore. Imagine that. So, um, but they did have a way for us to, to request a seat as well, but you're saying that if we call it, guys, they will make sure we get in.
Um, I think you do have to register with the league and then um, we just need to give the seniors a head count by Friday's. It's been on the schedule, but you still have to register with the league for it, yeah.
And that's why, because they're gonna provide us with, uh, how many people are registered, so we can let the seniors know how much we're prepared. And ha, and they need to know how much stuff they need to earn.
I can register you. You wanna go? You, you can? That'd be great. Cause I did wanna go and I tried to register.
My guess is if you have an account though, if we create another account, you'll have three.
Well, it would take either one of my known passwords. It would not take either of my known passwords, so I didn't know what else to do.
You probably can talk to L O C and.
Yeah, I can. Reset the password. They didn't send me a reset to my city email, so I have no idea. How old it is or anything, it's funny. Okay, thank you.
Now you'll get every piece of that you would do in cities.
I'm gonna get a lot.
Uh, counselors, any counselor comments?
I have one.
Go ahead.
So on June fifteenth, we hosted a citywide, um, open to the public state of the. Fair, I guess you'd call it. And we had the city of Boardman Police Department Captain Dieter came and he passed out about sixty helmets for free. And some identification, uh, small badges or something. Uh, stickers, kids love that stuff, very. And then uh, we gave out thirty-two car seats, brand new car seats. Um, we probably could give it out more, but we ran out. And then, well, we studied some boosters, but those were gone the next morning, just like that. Um, we gave out about the same number of life jackets and we had multiple agencies that came. So Boardman P D, the Boardman Fire Department, they came, they had several calls while they were there and they just left the ladder truck. For us to enjoy. That was super fun. The kids loved that. Maybe touching all the buttons. We were like, no, that's bad. Anyway, but, um, the sheriff's office came and they brought their marine deputy and um, I believe her first name is Lori and the boat. And so we, they got to, kids all went up to look at that and hang out and talk to, uh, I think it's named the wrong. And then um, the state patrol came. And they had both the state patrol officer, two officers, one who was helping with car seats and one that was um. Walked over and talked to Captain Dieter and walked among all the kids and whatnot and passed out some more stickers, which sounds good. Um, the library people came and they did fishing for ducks and that was very fun. Um, I don't wanna leave anyone out. Uh, Boardman Foods came and they cooked three hundred hot dogs and passed out food and things like that. Uh, the vector control came and they did, um, they brought their big mosquito who's like six and a half feet tall and all the kids were terrified of it. Which is also fun. Um, there was. Somebody else who was it? Oh, the health department, the uh, cocoon, well, she used to be the cocoon nurse, Yvonne Warner, came and helped with the car seats. And Good Shepherd Hospital came and they also helped with the car seats. So we had multiple agencies. Two hours, we commandeered the stage center, the parking lot at the Neil Early Learning Center, part of the M C C. Plus all of the Neil Early Learning Center, building and. Like, so it was really nice, very nice. We didn't have a super good turnout. I tried to advertise in a couple of places. I didn't make the deadline for the Boardman paper and my advertisement in the Heffner one was on page ten, so everybody got to know who. But. Next year, if we get another eleven thousand dollars, I'll just, you know, stab myself and then. It was a lot of work, but it turned out well.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, just, just to clarify, so the helmets and the life jackets and all that were actually a grant. That Brenda had gotten that then we passed out.
Yeah, I got one Scott cycle. And they, they purchased all the helmets. They made sure we had the right kinds and. Yeah, that was real, real nice. And we had nothing left over. All got committed.
Do you have a counselor comments? I have a mayor comment. I have a, it's a question. Marine Drive is closed to marker forty. Who owns that road? That answered my question.
They can close it as long as they want. It's their road.
And I mean, we can make a note that they did open it briefly for the fourth and they didn't have to, but they did because they knew it was gonna be.
As they were, they were.
It was just in, in, in marker forty beach was.
Yes, yes, it was.
That's where multiple locals go to get away from the, everybody else.
Bingo. And that's why it's so frustrating that that road is closed all summer.
Well, I, you know, I.
And I'll just leave it at that.
There's a lot of, lot of infrastructure that's being developed down there that will in the future be positive for.
Yeah, the people in the buildings who take over marker forty.
There's no access to it.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they're gonna be, they're gonna have to be, they're gonna, we'll, I'm in deer, we'll have to do a marker fifty then or something. Well, the locals just lost their marker for.
That, that, that place was not very accessible when I was a kid and it was just a little, now it's nice and, I don't know.
Oh, the age of development.
For young, you had still had to hike through some stuff to get up it. Yeah, absolutely. But it's very beautiful down there.
Well, it is.
Yeah.
Are you ready for this meeting adjourned?